Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Board of Education. I would like to start by explaining the format of tonight's meeting in simple terms. The Board of Education provides two opportunities for you to express your ideas and share your thoughts with the Board of Education. The first will be after we receive an update from our superintendent. The second will be after our meeting has concluded. Both sessions will be 30 minutes in duration, and all speakers will be limited to three minutes to give as many people a chance to speak as possible. Please approach any one of the three microphones in front of the auditorium. Please state your name and address prior to beginning your comments, so the district clerk can accurately reflect the minutes of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Rogers, our district clerk, will let me know when you have 30 seconds left, so you can wrap up your comments before the end of the three minutes. You must be stationed at a microphone to express your ideas and share your thoughts with the Board. The Board of Education respects the varied opinions of the community and will provide a comfortable and safe environment. Any behavior that threatens the integrity of tonight's meeting will not be tolerated and will cause the Board of Education to adjourn the meeting. Complaints or challenges should follow procedures listed under Policies 1400, 1410, and/or 1440, which are included on the materials table. Thank you for your anticipated courtesy and cooperation. In the event of fire, and if you hear the fire bell, you must leave the building. The first 10 rows in the auditorium should use the exit to my left; those in the back of the room should use the rear doors and exit the building to the left. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just as for all.
Mrs. D'Amico, may I have a motion to amend the order of business?
I make a motion to amend the order of business contained in the public meeting agenda set forth in Policy 2350 to allow the Board to vote upon the consent agenda prior to the superintendent's update during the August 25, 2021, meeting of the Board of Education.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of Items 1 (A through I), 2 (A through S), and 3 (A through G) be approved as a whole with action recorded separately.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. DeFendini.
Thank you, Mr. Goldberg. I wanted to start out, actually, by just sharing just a quick story. So earlier this evening, right before we jumped into our first executive session before the meeting, I was walking down the hall and I actually heard the sound of singing voices coming from the end of the hallway in this general area. I was able to pop in, and Mrs. Tucker's mixed chorus was actually working to start their preparations for the 9/11 ceremony, which is scheduled this year and sponsored by the Community Summit through Farmingdale Library, who is also supportive of that particular group as well. It was remarkable, hearing their singing voices, knowing that we're preparing for the upcoming school year, sort of just did bring everything into focus in a lot of different ways, and just super thankful to be in a place where those kinds of opportunities are coming back for our kids. That wouldn't have been something that we would have been able to do last year. A little thing, I know, but just something that I'm celebrating right now as the superintendent, being able to see those kinds of things happening, and knowing more of that is planned for the upcoming school year is just fantastic. So as far as the more business-oriented items, we have building readiness with thanks to our operations and maintenance staff, who have been working extremely hard over the course of the summer getting our buildings ready. They are in fantastic shape. Many of our teachers, administrators, support staff members are back now, getting geared up and ready for the upcoming school year. The building really does look fantastic. I know that we have a building walkthrough scheduled with the Board of Education. We'll see whether or not that may or may not be necessary, but again, the buildings are in really great shape with thanks to the entire operations and maintenance staff, who've done an absolutely Herculean job this summer, getting the buildings in the shape that they're in right now and ready for our students and our staff. Bathroom renovations, we had some holdups last year that's caused us some level of angst. There were some construction-related delays by some of the contractors, but not all of the contractors had the same level of problems. Glad to report to you right now that the work over the summer is largely done. Bathrooms are and will be substantially complete for the start of school. There still will be some smaller items that do need to be done, you know, within the bathrooms around the district, but we are at a place right now where we're able to get done with the bathrooms for the start of school, and that was based upon an approval of a capital proposition from the community several years ago. So again, fortunately, we're at a place that those bathroom renovations did happen as planned over the course of the summer. The Aquatic Center, quick update on the Aquatic Center. So we were making tremendous progress. We still are making good progress with regard to the Aquatic Center. We've had a couple of delays here and there, largely due to what you're witnessing in the construction industry in general. Timing delays with regard to materials, which are being seen, you know, clear across this country, are having a little impact on us. Again, nothing of a major concern. Project is still moving along, you know, we still have construction happening onsite every single day. They've now completed all of the Mason-related work at the Aquatic Center, and they're now starting to work on fixing and building out a lot of the interior spaces. So you're going to see now the walls that are coming into place, the locker rooms are starting to form. Those kinds of structural elements inside of the actual Aquatic Center are now starting to come to light. So you can really, when you walk the facility, you can start to feel what the facility is going to look like when it does hit, you know, its final stages. Also fortunate to report that we are still on budget. We've had one large deduct and a couple of change order increases to the project, but we are still within the budget that we had provided the Board of Education when we began the project. So good sign that even though the market is seeing a big increase in the construction-related costs, we did bid this project out and we did award the contracts before a lot of those things hit the market. So we're not seeing what homeowners might be seeing when a homeowner does their deck or does a renovation on their house, they're seeing 30%, 40% markups. We're not seeing that because this project was actually awarded and contracted to the vendor before those issues began to percolate, you know, in the economy. So that's another good sign with regard to that project. As far as anticipated completion date, we're still looking. Somewhere at or around the holidays, we'll have a better idea as to what that schedule will look like, because we do have one more push with materials over the course of the next week. So we will continue to keep you updated on to the schedule of that project. One other piece of information, we had a number of busing concerns as well, leading into the upcoming school year. Again, another concern that we've shared with the Board over the course of the last several months. A busing company has seen a reduction in the number of drivers to the tune of almost 17%. Not a local problem. This is, again, a problem that we're seeing not across the county or even the island. This is a statewide and even national issue. I know Disney World, as a point of reference, actually, is seeing 400 drivers less than they typically do during this time of year for their own routes within Disney. So it's not a Farmingdale problem, this is something that's happening at almost every level. But again, we were able to iron those things out. We had to do some work with thanks to our transportation department, who is working especially hard this year. Parents will be getting passes for their buses prior to the start of the school year. So we were a little concerned, we were a few hundred short. We did the work that we needed to today, and we should be in a place where, prior to the start of school, all of our parents will have the bus information that they need to get their kids transported to school on the first day. So again, it's been a difficult summer in that regard, but we were able to overcome that, and glad to say that those bus permits will be going out. Two more. The building use permits, another good sign, that things are moving in a positive direction. We will be opening up our facilities for after-school use in the after-hours. So beginning this fall, historically and in years past, our buildings were not open to the outside community. We were basically limiting it to our own use. Our buildings will be open. Groups like the Girl Scouts and the Boy Scouts, other outside organizations that want to use our facilities for various purposes will be welcomed back in. Permits are open now. We're looking at the schedules, and we'll be assigning permit use over the course of the next couple of weeks. So we'll continue to report out onto you as to the level of use that we're seeing in our buildings, but again, it's a good sign, you know, that things are moving in the right direction, we're beginning to open up more opportunities. My last opportunity to comment is just on, with regard to our reopening plan. As the Board of Education knows and as the community knows, on Friday, we submitted our plan to the community as far as our reopening for September. Again, just as a quick recap on the essential components of our plan for our reopening in September, all schools will be open for students beginning September 2. All of our schools will follow a traditional schedule, meaning kids will move between classes at the secondary level. They're not going to be stuck in cohorts the way that they were last year. Specials will be open, so instead of us pushing specials into the classrooms, kids will actually go to their specials. They will go to art, they will go to music. Kids will go to lunch. All of our lunchrooms will be open for our students to be able to participate in lunch. They will be three feet apart, based upon the recommendation that came from the CDC. We've had to figure out ways of doing that, but again, our lunchrooms are open, so our kids will no longer be eating in the classrooms. Our school district is not going to be hosting any full-year remote options, okay? So we do value here the importance of live, in-person instruction, so we were able to work this out in a way where we're meeting the CDC guidelines while at the same time making sure that we have all of our students back with us every single day. So there's no hybrid schedules, there's no remote schedules, you know, nothing like that this year planned. All the students will be back with us on that first day of school. Lockers will be available to our students. So our plan includes the reopening of lockers, which is something that we did last year to cut down on the congestion in the hallways. Lockers will be open at all buildings where lockers are available, so that includes some of our elementary schools that have lockers, as well as our middle school and our high school. Our plan on Friday was masks are being strongly recommended, but not required for students and staff. So that was the plan that we released to the community. That was our plan, to provide a mask optional environment for our students and for our staff for the start of school. Daily reminders will be sent out again, because we do have a requirement to report out on positive cases when we do receive them, so we will have those daily reminders that will be going out. We will also be reporting out to parents positive cases once a week on Fridays. They will get a report out of any of the positive cases that we've had within our schools. The good news is contact tracing should be significantly less impactful than it was last year. Last year, we wound up in a position where the contact tracing rules that were provided to us by the Nassau County Department of Health caused us to contact trace and ultimately quarantine many of our students in many different areas and arenas. We are going to be cutting down significantly on that in the upcoming year, based upon the new protocols that we have from the Nassau County Department of Health. We are still going to be limiting outside visitors during the academic day. We're trying to start the school year off without adding another level of complexity by having visitors into the building during the academic day, but as I mentioned, we will open up our building for after-school use for any of our visitors. Again, three-feet social distancing, I mentioned that before, is going to be the rule, but again, we understand in certain circumstances that our teachers are in need of, you know, moving kids around in a way to get the most out of them, and so it's an attempt to try to be in that place the best we can, knowing full well there may be circumstances where, you know, things like carpet time or group work are things that do need to come back to a degree to normalize our educational environment, to make our kids feel welcome and to make our kids feel safe and secure, you know, within our buildings. And we are looking to do that, and we have provided that direction to our staff. Students will be offered all types of extracurricular and after-school programs, as well as all sports, are on the table. So again, we're not limiting any of that. All of that will be in person and will be live. The last piece that I just wanted to obviously comment on, it's no secret that the governor spoke in a press conference this past Tuesday about protocol changes that may be coming down from the Department of Health over the course of the coming days, obviously indicated were specific issues surrounding mask-wearing and specifically around vaccination for staff or a testing option. Again, we are not in possession of the Department of Health guidelines at this point, can't really speak to the details of what that might look like. So, you know, at this juncture, we're not at a place where we can speak to any modifications that are being made specifically to our plan. Again, I've been doing this for a long time. We've all been doing this for a very long time, 18 months, and we know full well, you know, what you hear at a press conference when it gets put down on paper could be two very different things, and I'm not going to get in front of what that might look like when we finally do receive the specific direction from the Department of Health, which could look any number of ways when we get that. We are expecting that information before the start of the school year. Once we do, any modifications that we make to our plan based upon any of those mandates that do come down from the state, we will clearly communicate that with you, we will clearly communicate that with the community prior to the start of school. Outside of that, again, I just wanted to, one more time, commend the staff that's sitting at this table, my wonderful assistants who are at this table, who have done a tremendous job this summer, our administrative team, our teaching staff, our support staff. The work that's been done getting ready for this school year has been an enormous challenge for us, but we are in a place where, again, pending some other changes that might be forthcoming, we are going to be far better than we were last year. Last year was sad. I'm not going to try to shortchange, you know, how the beginning of last year felt when our students walked out the door at the end of the school day and we didn't see them till the next day again. You know, we worked really hard over the course of the summer to make sure that that's not the case when this year starts, and this school year should hopefully have a much better feel as we welcome our students back on September 2. So that's my update for today. Thank you, Mr. Goldberg.
Thank you, Mr. DeFendini. Just confirming, I know you mentioned... The desk guards are staying down?
Yes, the desk guards were taken down at the end of the last school year, and they are not put back in for the upcoming school year. Again, CDC did not make any recommendations with regard to the desk guard, so they're not going back up.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. DeFendini. I'd like to open the meeting for the first public participation. Please be sure to clearly state your name and address when you approach the microphone. As a reminder, public participation will be limited to 30 minutes. Each individual speaker will have three minutes in which to ask their questions or to make any statements. The district clerk will hold the timer for us. If we do not get to all of the speakers during the first 30 minutes, we will reopen later in the meeting to continue. The meeting will now open for 30 minutes.
Good evening, Barbara Bood. My address is on file. I want to start by thanking you for your opening plans. I believe that it is exactly in line with what many parents were hoping to hear from you and see, so thank you for that. But yes, we did all see the governor, the new governor come on yesterday with her own ideas about what needs to happen, and I think I want to take a moment just to share some facts. So for over 180 days in New York, we were, every district in New York was required by building to report their COVID cases to the New York State Department of Health. My question is, is where is that data? Why has that not been shared with us? What is it that she's basing her decision for universal masking on? I would welcome that data, I would like to see it and understand so we, as a local district, can make informed decisions. My concern is, is that the data doesn't support her agenda, and if it did, they would have shared that by now. So here's what I want everyone to understand, this is about control, and the reality is, is the control is back with the parents. Our parental rights are back in play. The governor is no longer, there's no longer a state of emergency in New York, the governor does not have emergency powers. She is trying to circumvent the legislative process by asking the DOH to issue guidance. The DOH works for her, and do the math. So it is our right as parents to work with those that we elected and to represent us to be our voices for our children. So I think my question here today is, knowing what might be coming down, are you going to, are you going to fight for, to maintain local control? Are you going to be the voices for the parents and for our children? That's really what I want to come out of tonight, understanding is, you have the power, are you going to use it? Thank you.
We're going to try to take the questions to the best of our ability on the front side, so we don't limit the duration of the 30-minute public participation. I can go on right now to answer the question, but that would limit the amount of public participation available. We'll write the questions down, and at the end of the public participation, we'll do the best job we can responding to those questions, if that's fair.
Lady in pink to my right.
Hello, good evening. My name is Nicole Knopfle. My address is on file. I want to first start off and thank you for the opportunity for giving me the chance to speak. I also want to thank you for being pro-parent choice. With that said, I just have a couple of questions. Has the legal team for the district put together litigation regarding unlawful mandates on our precious children? I also want to know, are the attorneys looking to file a lawsuit for parental choice like Massapequa? We are no longer in an emergency health crisis, let's band together with Massapequa, since they are taking the lead in fighting for parental choice. Is the Farmingdale District working with neighborhood, neighboring districts on this issue? I think we could get more accomplished if we all come together as a team and fight for parental choice. So let's be proud Daleers and not ashamed. Thank you.
My name is Peggy Elder. I live in Massapequa, and I am a trained contact tracer. And anyone who thinks that this is not a crisis anymore is only fooling themselves. Also, there is a thing called child abuse, and usually it's the parents who are imposing it upon their children, and often it's due to their own ignorance and inability to deal with facts. This is an institution of education. We have to go with facts and truth, and what I've just heard has nothing to do with either of those things. Thank you.
Please, please, let's keep the decorum here. Please, everyone, let's please not have contact with each other. Thank you. Mr. Morrow.
Thank you all again. Eric Morrow, 25 Dale Drive, Farmingdale, New York. Anyone wants to come visit and debate me, I know my facts. I want to start off with just thanking you all, because I do sincerely mean it. It's obvious that you've heard where this town feels, and thank you for parent rights, and Paul, you've been amazing in regards to listening and reaching out, so thank you. I just want to start with, you know, some things, but I need to rebuttal just one thing. Being a contact tracer does not mean you know any facts, and that was just apparent. Until last year, there was no such thing as knowing what a contact tracer was, so that three-hour course didn't impress me. I'm talking my time, you can come back.
Ma'am, ma'am, let's please keep the decorum.
That's what we're dealing with.
Thank you.
Can I get my time?
Ladies and gentlemen, let's please keep it to a minimum out here. Let's, Mr. Morrow, finish your statement.
Last name's Bundy. Okay. Nothing in the world is more dangerous than sincere ignorance and conscientious stupidity. Martin Luther King. When in history have the people silencing one side of any debate been on the right side of humanity? Just ask yourself that question. It takes 20 years to build a reputation and five minutes to ruin it. If you think about that, you'll do things differently. I've lived in Farmingdale my whole life, 40 years. I would never do something to ruin my reputation. I'm here to fight with you for our kids. I'm not here to fight with you against our kids. So please fight for us, is my message. Do all you could do to help us keep our kids out of masks. The town is begging you. You've done it, you've been sincere, you've announced it. If these mandates come down from the DOH, we need to be able to fight them in advance. We need to have the law team on our side. We need to jump together to Massapequa, to every district that'll fight with us, and I'm here to help you in any way, I don't care. Ignorance of the law is a law. You can't be ignorant of it. You can't break the law and not know it. Please read your laws. There's also something called the Nuremberg Code. And just leave you with this, the definition of a mercenary, primarily concerned with making money at the expense of ethics. I hope none of you are mercenaries. And the last thing, last quote, it's about our kids' innocence. That's what I'm fighting for. Innocence once lost can never be regained. Darkness once gazed upon can never be lost. Let's please keep our kids' innocence. Thank you.
My address is on file. I'd like to speak mostly on these possible new guidelines. Back in the spring, when we were fighting for mask optional, all I heard was, "Our hands are tied." But you are just one district. Why didn't all of the districts come together to fight for the children? Cuomo could not legally fire all superintendents and close all Long Island schools. Why didn't you band together? If you really wanted the choice, you would have stood as a unit fighting for the kids. You still can, but because of the rolling over, we're now back to square one. Just remember that a mandate is not a law, guidance is not a law, never was and never will be. Masks are harmful to our kids. We teach them at a young age that if something doesn't feel right, to tell a trusted grownup to listen to their bodies. Now we are teaching our kids to not listen to their bodies, and if it doesn't feel right, too bad, deal with it. This is a great way to allow our children to be groomed by predators. We've now taught them, and if an adult tells them to do something, even if it causes them distress, that they need to listen to the adult and that they have no say over their own bodies. My child was destroyed by last year. She has auditory processing disorder. She has difficulty processing speech on a good day. Now add in a teacher with a mask on their face? Can you imagine the anxiety my child felt when she's trying to listen to her teacher and she can't understand a word that she's saying because her face is covered like this? All children need to be able to hear teaching clearly. Can you imagine this being a daily occurrence for these kids? My daughter now has anxiety, low frustration tolerance. I sent a happy-go-lucky seven-year-old to your school in September 2020, and I now have an anxious, frustrated eight-year-old who can't control her emotions. I'm now left with no choice but to homeschool. I don't want to. But how can I send my child to school knowing that my body, my choice, only applies to abortions and that she has no say over her own body when in the care of the people who are supposed to be responsible for her education and well-being? This is assuming that when these guidelines and guidance comes, that we're just going to roll over. By denying my child the right to go to school without a mask, you are withholding her education. All of the people in charge have failed these kids. If you don't fight the mandate for masks now, you're going to be in for a rude awakening when the vaccine comes out, because if you don't fight for mask choice, you will have no recourse for fighting for the vaccine to be a choice. You will lose hundreds, maybe more, more kids in this district to homeschooling when that mandate comes out. If you want to have a district left, fight now. Last year, there is... There is absolutely no science behind the masking of kids, and Europe, our kids under 12 have never needed them. They have fared no worse than the US. The mask serves one purpose, to control the population, to see how much we're willing to put up with. Control by masking right now, control by vaccination coming soon to a state near you. Stand up and fight for the kids before it's too late, because these kids will never get a normal childhood back if we keep rolling over. Two weeks to flatten the curve is now 18 months. It's now or never to fight for these kids. Thank you.
My name's John Oldbitter, and I live on West Drive in North Massapequa, and I'm here to talk about the possible mandates that are me coming down the pipeline in the next week. I grew up in Farmingdale. My parents grew up in Farmingdale. They went to Farmingdale High School, and my kids are going to go to Farmingdale High School as well. I'm a physician assistant, and I worked in critical care for five years. I was on the front lines for both surgeries in March, April, and back in December and January. I'm here to discuss the mask mandate that was released by the governor, and mind you, it's a mandate, it's not a law. These are just guidelines. I'm here as a medical professional with firsthand COVID experience, and firstly, as a concerned parent. Everyone says, "Follow the science." Well, I'm here to talk about the actual science and data regarding COVID. I'm not an angry parent, I'm not here to point fingers, I just want the Board to understand what actual research and data says when these guidelines come down the pipeline in the next few days. There's not a single randomized control trial that shows wearing a mask statistically significantly decreases your risk of getting COVID or any viral illness, for that matter. There are actually randomized control trials that state people who wear cloth masks actually have an increased risk of contracting COVID due to the moisture and the bacteria that builds up in the mask. Combine that information with another study recently released by Johns Hopkins, one of the premier medical institutions in the country, if not the world, where they followed 45,000 kids who had COVID. None of them died. The only children that died or got sick were ones who already had pre-existing severe medical conditions, and they weren't even allowed to be in school in the first place. Our kids are not at risk. They're more likely to die from the flu than they are of COVID. And as of a couple hours ago, the CDC reports that only 454 kids under the age of 18 have died of COVID, out of 4 million cases. That's 1/10,000 of 1%. And I'm not saying that a child's life doesn't matter. Every child's life matters. Every kid's parents, their kids matter. I'm not saying that, but I'm just trying to tell you that the risk is not there. There's not a single documented case or an actual proof that a child who had COVID infected a teacher and went on to cause a death in a family or a grandparent. It's this board's job to provide and help our kids and receive the best education that Farmingdale can provide. And we're as parents, we're proud of that. And because we know what it means to be a Daler. But it's not a medical board, and the governor has no medical experience. She's, and so, medical decisions should be between a parent and a pediatrician based on their children's best interests. So let's talk about improving our children's mental health by letting them go outside and be able to hug and kiss one another. Because if, we're going to be dealing with a mental health epidemic in a few years if we don't stop this now. Kids need to read lips from teachers and observe facial expressions to learn and grow. Children need to bond and be close to each other, to build emotional connections, not to be separated by partitions and thank you that they won't be there. Or be covered up by masks that don't work or separated from six feet apart, which has never shown to be effective either. And I'm happy to explain why all that, but I don't have enough time to do that right now. So please, if you have any questions regarding COVID or the pathophysiology or any other statistical data, I'd be happy to discuss it with you after the meeting. Thank you for your time.
Amy Gumm, North Elm Street, Massapequa. I didn't write anything down, so I'm just going to wing it. I'm actually here, Mr. DeFendini hears from me occasionally. I want to talk about these special education children, children with disabilities, because no one seems to talk about them at all. And going back to when the pandemic first started, everyone, I know everybody was in like a tizzy, but nobody cared about these kids that were then sent home to work remotely that couldn't work remotely. So I'm going to just speak to my own children, but I do speak on behalf of a lot of families that have children with special needs. So I have a daughter who's now going into first grade, and I have another daughter who's starting kindergarten. My daughters were adopted from China. I took them out of a communist country where they had no say and they had no control. They lived in an orphanage. They had no smiles to see. I promised to love them and care for them and nurture them and educate them. My daughter in first grade, she has hearing loss. She wears bilateral cochlear bone conduction hearing aids. She has a genetic craniofacial syndrome. She's unable to breathe through her nose. My daughter has speech and language issues where she tests in the second percentile for peers her age. She's not understood. She's understood by known people only at 50% of the time. So that's low. Then we stuck a mask on her. Her speech has plummeted. She has made zero, zero, zero improvement in speech. So now she's a six-going-on-seven-year-old that can't speak. She speaks in words and language that nobody understands. She comes home sweating from the mask being over her face. She cries that she does not want to go to school this year because she doesn't want to wear the mask. And then I have my one entering kindergarten. She's legally blind. Now, yes, my children were part of CPSC, which is also Farmingdale's responsibility, both children. Eloise is blind. So she's going to have a mask on her face. Eloise has bronchiectasis, where she has lung disease, a severe lung disease. Eloise had COVID. She had COVID and had no symptoms, but she tested positive, recovered perfectly. Leah had COVID, tested positive, recovered beautifully. It's not the end of the world for a child to catch COVID. We don't want them to. But the facts are that these children hardly get sick. They don't get sick. You cannot cover the mouths of teachers. These kids, every child, not just special education children, need to learn social skills, social cues that they get from faces. Non-language communication is more than what speaking does for a child. How do they know if someone's smiling at them? I know for my children, they don't have experience in this. They have not been into the world yet. They, you know, my one daughter came during COVID and my other daughter was young. They don't have experience out with peers at all. I don't want my kids to only see eyes. They need to see faces, and their faces need to be seen. They're struggling in these masks, and someone needs to stick up for the kids with disabilities. Nobody talks about them. We've never gotten a letter for the kids with disabilities. We've never been talked to. No one's ever addressed speech issues. I was told that there are clear masks available. There shouldn't be clear masks available. If you're sticking them on a speech teacher's face, she should have to wear it. The teacher in kindergarten and first grade, and they should have to wear it. Wear a clear mask if they have to.
Mrs. Gumm, I'm sorry, we're past the three minutes, but you can come back up later. I'm very sorry.
Hello, my name is Gloria Remusat. My address is on file. I can appreciate all the parents' opinions. Everybody's here because they love their children, and that's obvious. But we all don't feel the same way about lots of things. The things that I have read, especially with the schools opening in the South.
Ma'am, can I interrupt you for one second? Could you just move closer to the mic a little bit? And you could restart if you'd like. Thank you. Can you restart her time?
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, that's better. Thank you.
I'm sorry. With the schools in the South opening in August, that they have already gone into remote learning. My question is simply is that why was not, why was there not a remote option available? If there are options for wearing masks and not wearing masks, why would there not still be an option for remote learning? I'm an educator. I work in two school districts. And that did work for many kids. For my own children, they actually thrived in remote learning because they felt less anxious about going to school. They felt secure at home, and they did well. That isn't for everybody, obviously. Some kids struggled, and those kids would have the option of being in school. So my question is simply, for the kids that are maybe afraid to go into the building, afraid of mask optional, why wouldn't they have the same option to stay home? They're doing their work. They're in class. They're paying attention, and they're doing well. Why wouldn't they have that option as well? Thank you.
I'm gubernatorial candidate John Nistico, 56 Pasadena Drive, Plainview, New York, 11803. Over the past weeks, I've been speaking at several board meetings. My staff has worked diligently. We have come up with the following data that is on the NIH website, courtesy of Dr. Anthony Fauci. Of 44 experimental studies referenced in 65 publications worldwide, the literature has revealed that disciplines of psychological and physical deterioration known as mask-induced exhaustion syndrome occurred in 68% of children wearing masks between the ages of zero and 17. MISE, as it is affectionately known, presents itself with headache, nausea, vomiting, and possibly fainting. Co-occurrences of respiratory distress in children zero to 17 are as follows. 82% of students that have worn masks between the ages of zero and 17 have noticed decreased oxygen levels and increased CO2 levels. They've also noticed a core temperature rise in their lungs, 88% of the people tested. 100% of all students tested that were prolonged mask wearers suffered from moisture in their lungs and sinus cavities. This presents itself in respiratory infections, upper respiratory infections, sinus infections, pneumonia, and possibly death. Mask-wearing is dangerous for children. This is a fact. This is documented in 65 journals worldwide. If you were, thank you. If you refer to the NYSSBA, and for those of you who don't know, that is the New York State School Board Association.org website, and you go to Article 3, Section 1, ANC, "School districts shall be held negligent if they pass anything that harms their children." If you go to Section 2, "School board members are not exempt from lawsuits brought against them personally." This is going to be sent out to every single solitary school board by my staff in the state of New York. We are anti-mask. You should have choice. And you cannot say that a mandate from the governor is law. You will be held liable, and I'm sure the parents here will effronally be calling me and taking me up on my opportunity to represent them. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you, everyone, for your comments and concerns.
So there was a question from an academic perspective that was asked about the remote, offering the remote option to our students. And again, even though we value, obviously, the opportunity to provide as many opportunities to our parents and to our students as possible from a learning perspective, we spent quite a bit of time working with our staff. We worked, spent quite a bit of time speaking to a variety of parents, you know, in the community regarding the issue. It was our belief system that students are best served being in person, being in a live educational setting. And what that, what that creates is, or that dichotomous relationship creates is a distraction. It becomes difficult in many instances for us to be able to accommodate both environments simultaneous without incurring significant cost. So as a point of reference, last year, the ability for us to offer a remote learning environment cost us to the tune of millions of dollars of additional staff that we had to hire in order to be able to provide that learning environment where we were able to provide a specific learning environment for those students that were learning remotely and another environment where students were providing a live learning setting. In the instances where we were trying to hybridize that, providing both live and remote at the same time, and talking to our educators, we did note the fact that there was a significant difference in the level of the academic program that we're able to offer because of the difficulty of being responsible for the kids that are not only in front of you, but the kids that are also behind a computer screen. We received, thankfully, federal money over the course of the last year to reimburse us. For the total price of COVID was to the tune of between $3.5 and $4 million in total by the time we paid for all the PPE, the barriers, and everything else that we had to do from a staffing standpoint. We just don't have the ability to continue to incur that cost and didn't want to put a plan in place that theoretically created a more difficult learning environment for our students that we're learning in person. So after a lot of thought and every effort to try to figure out how to do that, we're just not at a place at present where we can do that. What we do extend ourselves to do, though, to those parents that are in a place that they're dealing with whatever circumstance they're dealing with with regard to their child, I can promise you, we love every single one of our kids here in Farmingdale. We have an incredible staff of people that will take care of them. If you can please reach out to your child's building principal, communicate with them specifically what the issues are that might, your child might be dealing with, if there is something as far as a reentry plan that's causing them a level of concern. And I promise you, we will do our best to try to figure out what within the confines of the services that we do have available to make that the absolute best school year that we can for those kids that we're not able to provide that unique learning opportunity for. So again, I just would request that you reach out to the child's building principal or the child's teacher to figure out what we can do to better serve that child. Thank you.
Look at that, I got my own mic. Not that I need it with my big mouth. Folks, the board has asked me as its attorney to just kind of address an issue that's been repeatedly addressed by you all. I want to preface my remarks by indicating to you that in no way are they or am I attempting in any way to disrespect you or to argue with you. It isn't really a matter of argument, and they respect you and I respect you and we respect your right to come here and tell us your feelings, tell us what troubles you, and tell us how you view things and how you view what the state has done or hasn't done. But there's a couple of legal principles here that we all need to understand in order for us to together navigate this very contentious and very difficult area that we've all had to live in for many, many months. And some of these things we wrestle with in our own office. So statements that we've found to be correct to some degree and that we've had to analyze, like, you know, if it's a guideline, or it's guidance, or it's really more in the form of a recommendation or a letter or a bulletin, it's not the law, it's not a regulation. Is it enforceable? The answer is, it depends. Right now, we don't have anything to look at to even be able to tell because the new governor has not, and her cabinet have not, put together something for school boards and communities to look at. So let's just look at a couple of concepts. If the governor were to go to the Senate and the Assembly and get a law passed that said X and Y, whatever that is, masks, no masks, mask options, whatever it is, then probably, because that's a statute and that's the most enforceable promulgation from a government, that's probably enforceable and very difficult to challenge, right? Because that would be a law. The Commissioner of the New York State Department of Health and the Council for Health have the legal authority to adopt regulations. If they were to do that, then that would be enforceable under the law because a regulation is a type of law. So now it gets, it gets more complicated the farther away that you get from the law. And this is the point that you're making. What happens if they just issue a memo or a bulletin or guidance? That depends on several factors. Some agencies of the state and federal government have the authority to issue mandates that are enforceable by law. So the Department of Health, generally speaking, has the right to issue a mandate that would be enforceable as law through the public health law. What it depends on is who issues it, which officer agency, what do they write in it, and whether or not they have jurisdiction over the subject matter. So for example, recently, within the last months, the Commissioner of Education issued a couple of letters that you're probably all aware of, wherein she said, "Look, we're the State Education Department. We don't have the authority to issue rules with regard to health issues, except under certain limited circumstances." So she wrote to Dr. Zucker, the Commissioner of the Department of Health, and said, "You got to do that." So the question would be, if the State Education Department issued health regulations, would that be enforceable? Maybe not. You might be absolutely right. You might be absolutely right. And that may be something that somebody would challenge. But it takes a certain amount of analysis of whatever it is. So during the pandemic, I heard one of you very astutely say, "Well, there's no declaration of emergency right now, and there's no executive order, and the new governor said she's not going to issue an executive order because she agrees that she doesn't have the authority to do that." So if we go back retroactively to some time when guidance was coming out, that guidance was only enforceable, probably because of the executive orders. If they don't have an executive order that they're going to issue and they just issue a letter, I may be on your side of that fence. So, 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 so...
Let him speak.
Guys, look, we gotta conduct ourselves, me included, in a way that we can communicate. I'm gonna be done in a few seconds, and you'll be back to public participation at some You can't challenge what you don't have yet, okay? And that's true of every school district. You don't have it yet. We have to see what it is. To some degree, you know, we hope that government would do whatever they do according to the procedures that they're required to use. And if they don't, there may very well be grounds to challenge. When you say some have done it already, nobody has challenged this yet because Hockler, or whatever her name is, I never get the name right, she hasn't issued it yet. So we have to, we're in wait-and-see mode. That's frustrating for you. It's very frustrating for these folks because school starts soon, and they haven't gotten the government telling them what the rules are gonna be. So let's take, let's take it one day at a time. We're all gonna look at whatever it is, and we're all gonna see what we have to do, what we don't have to do, okay? Nobody up here has any disrespect for any of the positions you've taken. They do not. So let's just look at it. It's uncomfortable because it's so close to the beginning of the school year, but, you know, we have the fiasco that we have, where one governor just resigned and another one's new and in. So we'll wait and see. We're in this together in terms of looking at it, and we'll see what happens.
Thank you. I call for a motion to approve the minutes of the July 14th organizational meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the July 14th, 2021 organizational meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I call for a motion to approve the minutes of the July 14th special meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the July 14, 2021 special meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I call for a motion to approve the minutes of the July 27th meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the July 27, 2021 special meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I call for a motion to approve the minutes of the August 17 meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the August 17, 2021 special meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mrs. Rogers, have we received any correspondence this month?
Yes, Mr. Goldberg. The board received a number of emails, both in favor of and also against mask mandates. There was an email about baseball cards, parent request regarding a BOSI's program, and there was an invitation for a local Boards of Education meeting. That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Rogers. Are there any committee reports from the board?
No.
Nope.
I have one, Mike.
Mary?
From our public library. First of all, the 9/11 memorial at the Farmingdale Public Library is set for 9:00 at 6:00 p.m. So I believe 9/11 is a Saturday, so I believe that's a Thursday, 9:00 at 6:00 p.m. for the 9/11 memorial. As of right now, I'm sorry, as of this coming Monday, masks will be required in the library, but they are reevaluating each day their protocols.
Okay, thank you, everyone. May I have a motion to approve a resolution that will authorize the setting of the tax levy?
I make a motion to authorize the setting of the tax levy for the 2021-2022 school year, subject to adjustment based upon the application of the final equalization rates and assessed values from the Town of Oyster Bay, Nassau County, and the Town of Babylon, Suffolk County.
Mr. Motisi.
Thank you, Mr. Goldberg. Each year, the district awaits final information from both the state and the counties and the towns that we, that we do have the split taxing jurisdiction with. This resolution is designed to allow us to transmit the information once we have it, and we can do the abortionment between the towns. We are, at the time of this agenda creation, we had not received all this information, but we have now, and we will be transmitting that information over to the counties shortly.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Motisi. Anyone have any questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve a request for a mandated school zone exemption?
I make a motion to approve the following resolution, resolved that the Farmingdale Union Free School District Board of Education approves an exemption to the mandated school zone policy by reason of a demonstrated personal and/or family hardship in accordance with Board Policy 5110.
Do I have a second?
Mary.
Oh, Mary, sorry, I didn't hear you. Mr. Motisi.
Thank you, Mr. Goldberg. The board received a letter from a North Side parent looking to switch schools for personal reasons detailed in the letter. The parent is aware that transportation would have to be provided by the parent should the board approve this resolution.
Okay, all in favor? All opposed?
Nay.
Nay. We're gonna start that again, please. All in favor? Okay. All opposed?
Nay.
Motion is denied. At this time, I'd like to open the meeting for the second public participation. Once again, please be sure to clearly state your name and address when you approach the microphone. As a reminder, public participation will be limited to 30 minutes, and each individual speaker will have three minutes in which to ask their questions or to make any statements. Please approach the microphones if you'd like to speak.
You got all my info. I'm wordy, sorry. I just wanted to put this on public record, and this is public record, so it may or may not matter. The news media came out the other day and said that the FDA approved the vaccine for kids 12 and older, fully approved. That is not true. I hope you read the guidelines. Page 12, specifically of their own guidelines state, "This product has not been approved or licensed by the FDA, but has been authorized for emergency use by FDA under EUA to prevent coronavirus disease 2019, COVID-19, for use in individuals 12 years age or older. The emergency use of this product is only authorized for the duration of the declaration and that circumstances exist justifying the authorization of emergency use of the medical product under Section 54, I can't see, B1 of the FDNC Act, unless the declaration is terminated or authorized, revoked sooner." So that's just for public record. Then I wanted to explain exactly what's happening, and I really hope you guys are doing your research because I promise you, us parents are awake, and we are. We're not just believing what they announce. So some people have been here saying, "I heard on the news, I heard this, I heard that," and I want you to know this stat. They are parroting this, this is all over. They're announcing that 96% of the United States doctors are vaccinated. 96%, that's a pretty high number. So high, I was like, wait, let me see. That's American Medical Association, pretty big industry, pretty big company that would say such a thing, except exactly that, they are a company. They surveyed 301 doctors. There are, as of 2015 in the United States, because I couldn't find any other, there are 870,900 doctors. So that's 1 in 3,000. Pretty hard to come out with that stat, but yep, that's what they're saying, 96% of doctors are vaccinated. So just want you to know that. Then I did a little more deep digging, and I looked, okay, who funds the AMA? Your normal, Merck, Pfizer, you know, those people. And then who funds the site that protects AMA? So who funds the site that tells us that they have journalistic integrity and what they're saying to us is real? Well, that's WAME, and W-A-M-E. And you want to know who funds them? American Medical Association, I know. So the company they're, they're watching is being funded by them, so that's interesting. So just want that on public record, that when you guys are gonna show us stats, anything with efficacy, I hope you're doing your research as well, because we are, and I promise you, I've become a lawyer without the degree. Ralph, I envy, I do not envy what you do for a living. I do not envy being a lawyer at all, but I will do it to save my kids' innocence and love, and that's what we're doing. Okay? So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Hi, Jim Kahlenowski, 35 Seventh Avenue, Farmingdale, New York. Just to follow up on the statement that was made over here, I want the board and the superintendents to be aware that the FDA, and everybody else to be aware, the FDA approved Comanate. They did not approve the experimental drug that they've been doing right now. So when it comes to a mandate from the federal government or the state government to issue a vaccine order, if the vial has on it that it was the Pfizer, Biotech, BioNTech, then it's not an approved vaccine. If they have Comanetri on it, then it's approved. So far, they have not produced any in the United States, they don't intend to, and so we'll be giving the old vials. This is a cover for Pfizer. This is a approval without an approval. I suggest everybody read, this is the eight pages from Pfizer's website stating the same. If you go to the FDA, they clearly state it. So I just need the board and the superintendents to be aware that we have not had an approved vaccine. I'm not in favor of it or against it, it doesn't matter, I don't care if people take it or don't take it. I just want the mandate, it can't be mandated still under emergency use authorization unless you're getting the approved one, which we don't have yet. The second thing is, I heard that there was an invitation for the board to meet with other school boards. I could tell you right now, the teachers' union would be huddled for months and months preparing for what is coming down the pike. So for our attorney here, we should be preparing for what's coming down the pike. We shouldn't be waiting for it to come. We should be, every district on Long Island and in the state should be gathered together and take our power back. States should take their power back from the federal government. School boards should take their power back from the state government, and let's start being a local governed organization. And we deserve to say what we want for our community right here and not have some unelected official up in New York State now tell us what to do, or some bureaucrat in the federal government to tell us what to do. Thank you.
Ma'am?
Hi, Sharon Antonellas. I live on Linden Street in Massapeacon Park. I wasn't planning on saying anything tonight until the gentleman in the white shirt spoke about symptoms and stuff. I have a middle schooler here, and I have a high schooler, and my middle schooler every day would come home crying with headaches. And I went through so many bottles of Motrin, every day, the headaches, the headaches. And I was grateful that he could come every day because he loved it, but I kept thinking to myself, something's wrong here. He's masked every day, would come home soaking wet, food in it, and the headaches constantly. And I knew that there was a connection there. So when we all sit here and we all talk about masks, no masks, and who wants them, who doesn't want them, I don't think any parent wants to have to make the decision for another parent. All we want is choice. So when that comes down the pike, and I think we all know it's coming in the next couple of days, I just ask you, think of our kids, and know that we're thinking of our kids, and we, we want you to protect them and put them first. Thank you.
Lisa Barbary-Pickett, 67 Birch Avenue East, Farmingdale, New York. I am not a boarded bread dealer. We chose to come to this school because of all the great things that we heard, about all the programs, about all the, everything that Farmingdale had to offer. We chose to be here. All we are asking is to keep that choice for everybody. I put my seatbelt on and my card not to protect anybody else, but to protect myself. If I want my daughter to go to school with a mask, it is my choice to send her with a mask. I don't need anybody else taking her constitutional rights away from her because people are scared. If we started taking everything away because people are scared, why the hell bother leaving the house? We are here to fight for our children. Every day, or every phone call that we get from Mr. DeFandini, how we're Dailers strong, we're Dailers together, goddammit, let's fight like Dailers and stop this nonsense. We are not doing anything for our kids by making them mask up and shut up. Thank you.
Just one final comment for me. I think you've heard us loud and clear, and I hope you take this message to heart because we, the parents, are awake, we're not going away, and we're taking our power back. It's, it's not 2020 anymore. We're not looking for permission, we're not asking. We're telling you that we know what's best for our children, and our parental rights do not end at the classroom door. These are our kids, and we are allowed to make these decisions. Please work with us, because if you don't, we will be replacing you.
Jeff Roth, my address is on file. Thank you for changing the venue to the auditorium for this meeting. Sure, if it was held in the cafeteria, the temperature would be at least 10 degrees hotter. Can you put the air conditioner on? AC on? Oh, no, you don't have it yet, that's right. So to inform you, bring you back down memory lane, back in 2012, 2013, when I think the only person on the board back then was Kathy and Michael, you were engaging in an energy performance contract. Now, I wasn't gonna show up at this meeting because I was gonna let the parents hear about their issue with masks, because I don't have children in the district yet, although I have friends and family in multiple school districts. When you brought up about your HVAC, HVAC systems in your entire buildings, one of the pitches of it was that you needed the building controls and the vents cleaned out and the univentilators replaced, because why? Number one, children learn better when there's better oxygen levels in the classroom. So now think about the hypocrisy on that one, all right? And now, thank God, Farmingdale was smart because all the other districts are scrambling to clean out their vents and fix their HVAC systems. And let me tell you, since May, I've worked in three different districts across Long Island. Oh, by the way, how's the stage lighting system holding up that I installed in 1992? Because it's supposed to last the life of the electrician, that's the rule of thumb. I was back in Great Neck on another project I did over 25 years ago. Speaking of 25 years ago, in 1995 to 2000, when the internet first was brought into the schools, part of their big pitch was remote learning, and the idea was, now we could offer electives that your district is no longer offering. Now we could offer college classes remotely. This is 25 years ago. This is 25 years ago. So, for example, if your kid wanted to be a lawyer, an attorney, or if your kid wanted to go into finance, well, if that district couldn't afford to have that elective, he could take it remotely. But yet, then, last year, I heard a quote saying, "You're building an airplane in flight." And you're not the only district that got caught not being able, with their technology, do remote learning, distance learning correctly, even though it was envisioned 25 years ago. I went to those vendor conferences, where all those superintendents and boards went down to the hotels. So, the question is, what did you do with that money over the past 25 years? What'd you do with that technology money? Did you invest it so it's scalable? Oh, no, you just, I know what you did with it, and that's one of the reasons why. An excellent speech, Richard, I caught it remotely via live stream. You know, you said, you talked about respect and your right to express opinions, you know? You talked about how no one up here has any disrespect for any positions you have taken.
Excuse me, Mr. Roth?
Oh, is my three minutes up?
It's almost up. You have about 30 seconds.
Oh, thank you. You know, you gotta get the time clock like I've been asking for. So, you know, and it's not funny, really, actually, but it is funny that it's been going on for so long. So, you know, you, you did have disrespect for my opinion. You didn't like it. But you know what? I'm not going away. I'll tell you that much. And I'm glad that these parents are finally waking up and questioning what you speak and say. Practice what you preach. That's all I have to say. Thanks for coming down. Good night.
Would anyone else like to speak? Okay. I'm sorry.
John Allbetter, West Drive Farming. I just wanna say one more thing, that we understand that we're on the same ground here with the optional mask and the, you know, relinquishing of the partitions despite the mandates that might be happening, but, you know, you have our support to make a decision and to stand up for the, the kids in the district, despite about whatever the mandate may be. We, of the, of the people in the community, have power to fight back. It's not just to fold over and say, "Well, this is what, what she said." We, we have power, and we want to, people to realize and embrace that. And all the people in the room here are behind you. We're not here to fight against you, and we support the decisions, and especially the motions that are being put in progress already. So, we just wanna say thank you. Okay?
Good job, gentlemen. Yeah.
John Nistico, my information is on record. Counselor, I have to ask you a question. If there are laws passed, as I stated in the New York State School Board Association.org document that I presented on liability and negligence, I think the parents have the right to know who their attorney is gonna need to contact first, because regardless of what the law says, people are gonna be held liable. If damage turns out to be caused by masks, these parents have a right to compensation. They have a right to legal action. And I wanna know, who's gonna be held responsible for that? Is it gonna be you? Is it gonna be Albany? Is it gonna be the federal government? I think every one of these parents has the right to know who they're gonna sue, because what's gonna happen if prolonged mask wearing causes one of these kids to go into a depression and kill themselves? Because alcohol and drug abuse and depression is on the rise in children. Who's gonna be responsible for that? Are you gonna be responsible for that, Counselor? I think the people deserve an answer. Thank you.
Hello again, Nicole Knopfo. My address is on file. This is more directed towards the lawyer. My question was never answered as to far as if you are going to stand with Massapequa and do as they are doing, even though nothing's done yet, but we need to be proactive instead of reactives. So, I need to know, are you gonna be standing with our children and standing with the parents for pro-choice, and are you going to stand behind with Massapequa and fight for our kids? That's what I wanna know. It was never answered. And I'm trying to be nice, and I'm trying to be patient, but nothing was answered with that question. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else? I wanna thank everyone for coming out this evening and expressing your concerns and comments.
We have a half hour left. Will somebody else speak? I would love to hear directly from our board.
Nope. Okay. Ma'am, if you have a question, you can come to the microphone. You can't yell out from the sides. If there are no further questions, I call for a motion to adjourn. Done. Yeah.
Christine Hopper, 5 Payne Avenue. I, I just wanna know, if he's working for the board, technically, doesn't the board work for us? So, shouldn't he be on our side, instead of coming at us and itching to pass some sort of mask protocol?
I don't, I don't see what he said as coming at you or going against anything, but Mr. Gerschel won't.
I'm sorry, ma'am, but I don't, I don't know that I said anything in any way adversarial. And, and frankly, my, my personal beliefs have nothing at all to do with the advice I give the board. And in fact, although I'm not at liberty to reveal my personal beliefs, they are not what you just said.
Well, can you answer her question?
The fact, the fact of the matter is that I don't know where you got what you just said from. All that I said, "No, you've gotta let me respond." You said something, you gotta let me say something. That's how this works.
Okay, I'm not gonna say.
Okay? The bottom line is that there is nothing to challenge right now. We have no idea what they're going to do, and it makes a world of difference if the state government passes a statute or it just issues a letter. And as I indicated, I tried to give many of your fellow neighbors credit for making some interesting points that we consider ourselves. Some things may be enforceable, some things maybe not, and we may have to make some decisions at some time about what we do, or can't do, or will do and can do. So, you haven't heard anybody here tonight on this board say anything to argue with any of you. They've listened, and they've been listening for quite some time. So, all I'd ask of you is, give them the opportunity, give everyone the opportunity to consider your thoughts, and to consider your thoughts as you come out to board meetings. They welcome you to these meetings, they're glad you come, and you come and you tell them how you feel, and then maybe they tell you how they feel, and that's what board meetings and community relations are all about. We're not, I'm not, they're not your enemy. We understand the frustration that you have with the state, but this is a good time for me to make a comment about that. And that is, you have a right to come to these board meetings, absolute right, and express yourself, and you can come every time there's a meeting, and express yourself. But the fact of the matter is, to some degree, we're all missing something. We're angry, you're angry with the state of New York, and to some degree, understandably so. You don't like the edicts that they hand down, you don't like what they've done and what they're doing. You're worried about vaccines, you're worried about the masks, you're worried about a series of issues which understandably you have concerns about. But what we're all missing in this is that those things come from them. The board has, this board has no authority to set any of those policies. They have no authority to set, for example, vaccination policy. None of that comes from a Board of Education. And while you're always welcome to come here, they're your neighbors and your friends, you elected them, the question that I've asked more than one community now is, what about the folks that are in office on the state level and the federal level? They're the ones, hold on, hold on, they're the ones that are creating these things that you can't tolerate. And while, again, you're welcome to come and tell the board how you feel, and try to persuade the board to see things your way and to do things that they can do, the bottom line is, the people that can do something, really can do something, are your elected officials.
Compliance is acceptance.
You, you can, you can, I don't, I'm not gonna get in an open debate with you. I'm not debating with you, I, I am not going to debate with you, but I will say something about what you just said. You can blame them if that's what you want, if that's what freedom is about, but in blaming them, you're also not thinking about the authors of these things who really are to blame. That's all I'm saying.
We're not blaming them, I promise you that.
Yeah, nobody should be yelling out, Mr. Roth.
Let, let, if anyone speaks again, let go up to the microphone for a second.
No, Mr. Okay. So, I wanna thank everybody for coming out this evening. There's nobody yelling out, so I'd like to thank everybody for coming out this evening. I call for a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
One more time, and a half hour left.